And if I could ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment after. Ms. McArdle, would you like to lead us in place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I can ask you to remain standing. Tragedy struck our town earlier this week, and I think that it's important that we all keep the victims of this event and the police officer who responded in our thoughts and in our prayers. Thank you. And then along those lines, the town, along with the Center for Family Justice, is going to hold a vigil for the victims of this tragedy on Sunday, February 21st at 6:00 p.m. on the Old Town Hall Green. And I encourage anyone who would like to come and share this time of reflection to join us there at 6 o'clock on Sunday. And we'll be getting that out further to everybody also. First up on our agenda are minutes from the regular meeting of January 27th. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion or edits to the minutes?
I just saw like a little typo, but I don't know.
We'll start with that.
Okay. On page two, under the second paragraph, BPW has no trucks, not, it says not trucks, not rocks.
Okay.
Yeah, no vague, I just didn't know.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion on the amendment?
Nope.
All in favor to vote?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes as amended are before us. Any further discussion or edits?
No.
Nope.
All right. All in favor of the minutes? Say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all right. Good, that one's done. Yes, thank you. Next up, to consider an act upon the minutes of regular meeting of February 3rd, 2016. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
Any edits or changes on this set?
Nope.
All right, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good, thank you. Endless. Next up, resignations for information only from the Conservation Commission. James Lucy, unaffiliated, from 316 Katona Drive. His term was from 1114 to 1119. His resignation date was February 10th, 2016. Then also from the Solid Waste and Recycling Commission, another resignation, Wendy Martininez, unaffiliated, from 684 Catamount Road for a term of 1112 to 1116, and her resignation date was February 5th, 2016. Next item up is from the Director of Community and Economic Development to hear, consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Community and Economic Development. Resolved that Michael C. Tetrow, first selectman, is hereby authorized to submit a request for up to $2 million in grant funding to replace a portion of the East Trunk Sanitary Sewer in response to a request for applications issued by the State Office of Policy and Management under its Responsible Growth and Transit-Oriented Development Grant Initiative. And further resolved that Michael C. Tetrow, first selectman, is hereby authorized on behalf of the town of Fairfield to sign the grant application and execute the required documents associated with administering the grant. And if awarded, including any amendments thereto and in order to participate in the Responsible Growth and Transit-Oriented Development Grant Program, may I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Lori, a second? Good, thank you. That item is now before us. Mr. Barnard.
Good afternoon. I'm joined by Joe Michelangelo, Director of Public Works here as well. Selectman Timniak probably knows we presented this jointly before the Water Pollution Control Authority. We became aware of a funding opportunity through the State Office of Policy Management under its Responsible Growth and Transit-Oriented Development Initiative that allowed municipalities to apply for capital construction financing to facilitate TOD development. And looking at the grant criteria, we thought it was a good match for some needed infrastructure improvements in the area of Fairfield Metro Center Station, Commerce Drive. Some of you are familiar with the East Trunk Sewer. There's a, services approximately 60% of the town, the eastern part of Fairfield. There's several sections in the line. There's a constriction where it limits capacity. That has been an issue in terms of other applications, development applications pending before various boards, where there was some concern about whether or not the pipe had the sufficient capacity to handle additional flows. And in addition to that, the pipe itself is quite old, and in some locations, it's below the water table and questionable integrity. So we thought this was a good opportunity to perhaps solicit some state assistance to replace this portion of the line, about 3,000 lineal foot section, which would extend from Fairfield Metro Center property itself, just across the Post Road, US Route 1. Currently, it follows the track of Ash Creek in some spots. If we were to get funding and to replace this section of line, we would follow the public right of way within the roads itself, which will be easier to maintain. And I think, I think all of you have received some backup information about the grant application itself and the project that we envisioned. I'd be happy to entertain or answer any questions you might have. I think, only before, why it's before this board is, we had sidebar conversation before the meeting actually started, in the sense that the applications were due in the early part of February, but in order to complete the application, we need a resolution from the appropriate town body authorizing the submission of the application, which is why it's before this board. We have to submit that, sort of like copy that resolution by the 25th in order for our application to be complete. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you might have, and I think Joe and I will be happy to hopefully answer them.
Just one question, sort of, that's the obvious. This resolution conforms to the standards that they're asking for?
It does. We took it word for word from the suggested language of the resolution.
Perfect. Any other questions? Lori?
No, not really answering them.
Chris, any, you want to enlighten us all about the WPCA?
Sure, no, I sat through a long WPCA meeting, which we saw maps, and this is a project which is needed to be done to upgrade our infrastructure. You know, I hope that the $2 million covers the entire cost. I don't believe it will, but it'll certainly move us towards the goal. Anytime you can get that much money from the state of Connecticut and have a project which fits, fits our needs so well, I think we should take advantage of it. This will also help with commercial development in the future, too, once we have this trunk line upgraded. It's something which needs to be done. We've talked about it as a town for a while, so I wish you the best of luck in this application as it moves forward to the state of Connecticut.
Yeah, no, well, I would just say that it is, I think it's wise to try to take care of it before it becomes an issue, having just this past weekend experienced a broken water main because it's so old and being without water. So better to take care of these things, and if we can do it with some state assistance, all the better.
Yeah, I think our collective sense is not a question of if this section has to be replaced, it's a question of when. And so, given the opportunity, we thought it would be at least appropriate to try to secure financing for this piece to help alleviate the costs and the burden on ratepayers and taxpayers here in Fairfield.
Not just eastern Fairfield, but this also will address the issues and needs in the southeast quadrant of Fairfield, where we've got some major commercial development plans.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so certainly for the metro center area and all the surrounding neighborhoods?
Most directly the metro center area, but the point is that the eastern trunk sewer services that entire half, eastern half of Fairfield. So obviously, the closer you are, the more direct benefit, I think, to this, this project.
Okay, very good. Well, that addressed some of the issues that we're currently experiencing, kind of the Brook Lawn neighborhood over in there? Or is that, is that too far over?
It's up to Joe on that.
Still using part of the Bridge Board sewer system?
Joe Michelangelo, Director of Public Works. That's still the east trunk line, but that's, that's quite a bit upstream. So the problems that you mentioned on lower Brook Lawn manifest themselves in the, the area behind the Board of Ed building, Haley Hibiscus, those areas we have problems. So it's the same line, but it goes further on. So, you know, that has, that area has always been on top of our radar screen. This one was sort of the second cousin to it. We knew it was there, but with the increased development, this has stepped up on our priority list. And, you know, the WPCA was, you know, during the metro center project, they got the developer to upgrade a 36-inch line through that whole property there. With the developments that are coming in that area, we do charge fees for that, so we are increasing revenues, so nobody's getting anything for free. But this is an opportunity to get something above and beyond those. So the 36-inch pipe that we have through the metro center property reduces to 33 and 30, which is obviously not a good situation. And this will address that. It's a 1950-era concrete pipe in a bad location, so it's something that's moved to the, near the top of our priority list.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments or questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Anything else before we vote?
Nope.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Mark, Joe, thank you. Okay, item six. We had discussed making a change to our calendar, not in a big way, but moving our start time back from 4:30 to 5:30 in consultation with the town clerk. We need to make that change for the balance of the year so that these will all be regularly scheduled meetings and not special meetings.
Okay. We're going to 5 o'clock though, right? Not 5:30?
Yes. It says from 4:30 to 5:00 p.m. I think the...
No, that's right, you just said 5:30.
Oh, my apologies, my apologies. Discussion and vote on the revised calendar. Change start times in the regular meetings to four, from 4:30 to 5:00 p.m. If everybody understands what we're trying to do, and I believe it's to accommodate some later schedules, so...
It's to accommodate my work schedule, so I appreciate it.
Not a problem. I could have a motion to change the start time for the balance of our regular meetings from 4:30 to 5:00, and those are listed on the attached handout of March 2nd, 16th, April 6th and 20th, May 4th and 18th, June 1st and 15th, July 6th and 20th, August 3rd and 17th, September 7th and 21, October 5th and 19th, November 2nd and 16th, and December 7th and 21st. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll do that.
And a second, all right. So that's before us. Any further discussion? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Jen, you'll make sure these get to the town clerk and are reposted appropriately. Next up, from the tax collector, to consider an act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector, and the amount recommended. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any amendments?
I'd like to take an amendment. Let's see. Are they going to amendment to delete the period at the end of the sentence, add a comma followed by the amount of $2,278.71 and a period?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, the item as amended is before us. Any further comments?
Nope.
Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, to hear, consider and act upon any other business that shall probably come before this meeting. Mr. Timniak?
I'd like to make a motion to add a member to the Holland Hill Building Committee. The member I'd like to add is Nick Asa of Ruane Street. When we originally put the committee together, we had six members in front of us, and I spoke to another member of the committee, maybe it was two weeks ago, and the more people we can put on, the less worried they'll have about quorum, especially when we're in the beginning part of this process, where we're going to be having multiple meetings. Nick is someone who has impeccable credentials, I believe, to serve on this committee. He also has what is very elusive right now, is the time during the day to do, to fill the shoes and serve on this committee as we put this forward. So I'd, again, like to make a motion before us to add Nick Asa to the committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. The items before us. The, we may need to add the item to the agenda first. You did properly make the motion to...
Add, to add the Holland Hill, add this to the agenda.
Add his nomination to the agenda. Do we say it that way?
I believe I added the word agenda. I wrote in the word agenda.
Yeah.
I'll do it again.
Yeah, it's okay. Just want to make sure we're doing it. I think the, I think the item is, there's two folds. There's one, add it to the agenda.
Okay.
And then a second motion to get it before us for discussion.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to add the Holland Hill Building Committee, a new member, to the agenda.
I'll second that.
All right, so that's second. So that's before us for discussion. Any comments as to why you want to do that? Or any explanation for that?
No, I just did that. When we originally put the committee together, we had six members who were before the body. We only went forward with five of those members. Going back to that conversation I had with one of the committee members, we approved, he was worried about quorum, and having more members will allow this. And as I said, Nick comes before us with impeccable credentials to serve on the committee. Most importantly, he also comes before us with the time. The point of getting the committee together early was so that we could have meetings during the work, work hours to move the project forward is an expedited process because the students at Holland Hill needed some instant action on this. It was a recommendation by Dr. Title to put the committee together for this first period. Nick is good because he has the time right now to serve on this committee during the middle of the day, which I think is one of the harder parts we have right now. The other big thing I have is that Nick is someone who is interested in serving on this committee for the remainder of the full term of the committee, which I think is important to get as many of those people on the committee from the beginning as we possibly can. So that is why I placed the nomination of Nick Asa of Ruane Street before us.
Did you have any comments to add?
Well, I concur with what Chris said and just add that, you know, Nick's going to bring a lot to the committee. He's got young children coming into the schools, so he's got a vested interest. He's a small business owner, so I think he'll bring quite a bit to the table.
The, I guess I've got a couple of concerns with the process, not with the person in general. From the top, we've got a process in place where we've just gone out to the public to ask for additional people, both from the Holland Hill community and the community at large. When you look at the quorum, there are currently five people on committee. A quorum is three. By adding a sixth person, the quorum is now four. So technically, we've made it harder to get a quorum, not easier. We will be adding additional people as this project moves forward. And again, as we described with, during Dr. Title's presentation of the approach to help get this off, it was to get it started. We've identified all along that we would be adding additional people. And going out to the community and asking for folks to volunteer, we've got a number of people that, where resumes are starting to come in. And again, no disrespect to the individual. I'm not clear on why this person would get bumped to the front of the line. When we look at, without going into any names, but one of the people that responded already has managed school construction projects for 13 years, including design, development, construction, management, and oversight of committees. In total, the operating budget that exceeded over $200 million. So very experienced in both school building projects and what has taken place here. He's had a responsibility for managing committee meetings during a highly contentious process, and it was his responsibility to direct the committee's design team with construction managers and the, working with the owners' representatives to balance needs of the community along with the requirements of the Board of Ed. He's very aware of the pre-existing conditions that should be addressed along with the ed specs on this project. He believes there's considerable abatement work that must be studied, as well as a review of the building's envelope and infrastructure. And I'm just highlighting those as some of the background, some of the experience that I think should be considered. I think the challenge here is to present the best balanced committee, as well as the best committee for the Holland Hill community. And I'm just not clear on why we're not following the process that would let us do that. And moving one person ahead and basically going out to all the people that we've just advertised the position to and saying that, you know, sorry, we're picking somebody instead of all of you before you had a chance, I think that sends the wrong message to the Holland Hill community. Holland Hill is, is a project and a school that's, that quite simply is not only important to our town, I've got a certain personal legacy there because that was the elementary school I went to. And certainly want to make sure that we're doing everything we can as a board to put the best people in front there. And I don't see how we do that without considering all the people that apply.
Your points are heard by me, and I believe that we are following the process. Nick had submitted his paperwork prior to the announcement going out, and I am happy, and I have not looked at that resume yet, but I'm happy to continue to add people to the, to the mix as we hit what was originally outlined to me. One, the time commitment they needed early on to jumpstart this program. Again, Nick hits that perfectly, and is an ideal candidate for that reason. As the resumes come in, I believe that we should go ahead and continue to add people who will be of value to this committee. So I have no problem in what you've outlined. So, and again, I think that's what was outlined to us originally by the building committee, and I think that's why we originally put six members forward.
No, what was outlined originally was that we'd set up something small to get started, then we'd bring folks on later. And to sit here and try and pick the members, I think, one at a time, basically does a disservice to all the other applications coming in. They are not, in essence, getting fair consideration when I look at the process. I think that, I just highlighted one, but I think what we want is a fair and balanced committee. And I think, Ms. McArdle, you pointed out last time, it'd be good to have some additional skills on it.
I agree.
I don't believe this person brings those skills, at least as I looked at the resume. And not that this person wouldn't be worth considering, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is you want to do that in light of what's the balance? What are we trying to fill at that point? And until we have the resumes in front of us, it's hard to pick. If we just do it first come, first served, I don't believe that gets us the best committee or best balance. And I think that it's literally doing a disservice to the people that are in the process of applying and the process of sending out their resumes, including the one I just read, who have great background and deserve full consideration from us, not to fill up the committee before people like this person get consideration. So I would ask the board to step back and think about the process that we're trying to follow here. The school project's getting off and running. We've got five people in front of the RTM. They can move forward with that.
Well, I'd just like to add that, you know, you just bring up the point that they're before the RTM, and they haven't been approved by the RTM at this point. There's still some discussion and some concern, and if some of those people or any of those people do not get approved by the RTM, then we could be putting the committee back a month. And by putting Nick on today and putting him up before the RTM, we could get, get the committee moving forward. It was also my understanding that some of these original people on may come off at a later date, so Nick would be, again, in at the beginning and somebody that could move the process, you know, continuity of the process forward.
Of the people that have been so nominated, I don't know anybody who is considering coming off at this point, at least not in their conversations with me. I think when we first discussed it, that certainly would have been allowed, but in fact, everybody who we've nominated is looking at, at being on for the duration.
Maybe I misunderstood, but I thought that perhaps a couple of the committee members were going to be on it just to get things, the ball rolling, and until we get it filled with, with other qualified persons.
Right. Yeah, not in the conversations that I've had with them since they've been nominated.
Okay, well, I wasn't, I haven't been part of those conversations, so...
So, and specifically, there are five folks in front of the RTM at this point, so...
I believe this vote is in line with the process we outlined. I think Nick will do a fantastic job serving on the board. And again, I think having members on as early as possible is important. So the big thing is get the process going, which is what we're doing. And then we can add people as the resumes come along. We have not put a, a date together of which we're going to add the next group of members, and I'm happy to do that. One of my concerns is that we have a date, which we've talked about, you know, later on in the summertime, and there's a lot of catch-up to go. So I don't believe at all, right now, not adding Nick will detract from that whatsoever. So I think we should move forward with the vote.
I'm not fully sure what you said, but basically, the resumes, we set a deadline for, I believe it's March 14th or 15th for those to come in. We evaluate those, those would be shared with everybody.
Mm-hmm.
And then shortly thereafter, we'd be making selection. But I think it's highly important to get the best quality of participants and to get the best balance and the best skillset mix that's been asked, that we look at all the resumes together and see what skillsets, and also to get the right balance of Holland Hill, the Holland Hill community.
So by that same point, Mike, why did we go ahead and nominate six members before making an announcement to the public? That we're formulating and grabbing resumes to have them submitted by March 15th? We've already, and I hate to say you're hypocritical on this, but we've already gone ahead, and we've nominated five members. We originally wanted six, and here we are trying to put Nick on to play catch-up to get back to that six number we originally started. The town did not send out any notice whatsoever that we were forming a building committee on this, and we put it, we nominated, we had six members in front of us. So now we've done that, I'm adding Nick to the agenda right now so we can get it back to the original plan, which is what you put forward, to have six people on. I don't see how that's being inconsistent with what we were told to jumpstart this. One of the main criterias of why we're putting town employees on was because we wanted people to be able to meet during the day so we can move this process forward. I'm very surprised at the reluctance to move this forward on your part.
Simply put, the project's moving forward. We have five people on it, they're before the RTM, that's moving forward. We have gone out to the public.
Right.
And I think it's only fair to the public and the Holland Hill community that we give members of the Holland Hill community and members of the public to respond to that before we nominate somebody else. That's a...
That's what we're going to do for the second, second part of this.
So to my point, Mike, we went, we formulated a building committee without going to the public originally. Right? Now, we've gone to the public, and you're trying to stop someone from joining the committee, who we originally wanted to put six members on. I think this is, I'm surprised that this is an issue right now, and I'm surprised that it's up for discussion. I think it's fantastic to get more public input on this than we, we can have, especially when we diversified the crowd of the committee the way we're doing. So again, I'm adamant about moving forward with this vote.
Yeah, the, we seem to be saying the same thing. I just frankly disagree, and I don't believe that this is a good policy or to follow, especially when we're in the midst of advertising out to any other folks. However, we seem to be going around in circles on this, so if there's no comment from the public, I believe the item before us is to add this to the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
I think that covers everybody. So next up, I think, is the item itself to vote on. Is there a motion to move it forward?
I'd like to make a motion to add Nick Asa of Ruane Street.
I think to accept the motion that's on, you just added the motion to be, so we're asking for a motion to accept the motion that's just been added to the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion on that?
Excuse me, can you spell his last name?
A.S.
A.Y.
A.Y.
Thank you.
And then the other item I point out, because this wasn't on the agenda, I did not get a chance to talk to the gentleman in question, so I don't really feel, again, that, for the items I said before, but also for that one that...
the items I said before, but also for that one that...
I'd like to just point out at this point that, you know, this, you know, came up prior to this meeting, and so you did know it was going to be coming up at the meeting, and it's sort of like the situation that we had previously where people are in the room and then we're debating in front of them, and I feel like that's not really proper.
Specifically, it's not on the agenda. I did not know what's coming up, and I did not know we were going to be taking up here. And I point out, did you tell me it was going to be on the agenda and you were going to make this motion?
I sent an, I sent an email telling you that it was going to come on the agenda.
Not sure I saw that. When did that come?
Yesterday, but anyway.
Yeah, yesterday I was in Hartford, and that's, that's the day before, and that's not enough time to sit down and talk to the gentleman in question. Excuse me, Chris, you're not recognized yet.
Okay. It was a follow-up to a phone call that was either made on Thursday or Friday by Chris. So it was just to, to follow it up when I saw that it was not on the agenda.
Yeah. Guys, I'm just uncomfortable with the process, but it's, you have the votes, so you can push it through if you want to.
I certainly will. And to be clear with the people at home, the First Selectman was well aware of this. He came prepared today, recited another application for the Holland Hill Building Committee, which he just happened to have in a small pile. I notified the town on Friday that this was the intention to add Nick, and there was reluctance at that point, too. So the notion that you weren't prepared for this, even with the paperwork you have in front of you, I find is, is a reach at best. So I'm, I'm happy to have the vote right now and move this forward.
Again, I'll point out that Ms. McCarroll is correct. She did send out an email that I didn't get to till late last night because I was in Hartford and had a Board of Finance meeting yesterday, but I just grabbed one of the resumes that had come in as an example of my point on the process, so...
So you knew?
Yeah, too late to do anything, but yes. So with that, and, so the motion's before us. Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? And that's it, so. From here, that's done. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I have one other thing I want to add.
If you would, if you're going to bring items up at this point in the future, I'd ask that you let me know what the topics are so we know whether to add them to the agenda at this point or elsewhere, but go ahead.
Okay, I just, when I got in here, I wanted to ask your chief of staff how many outstanding contracts the town currently has in negotiating with their, our labor unions? And I was notified it's four contracts we have outstanding. Could we receive an update on those contracts at the next Board of Selectmen meeting?
We can do that.
Okay. And on that same point, at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, I asked for an update from the Parks and Recs Department, which you also said we could do, and we'd put it on the agenda, and it was not on the agenda.
It was not on this agenda in March, which is coming up shortly. We go through each department, including Parks and Rec, and that is one of the topics that we discuss as part of the budget and review in terms of what the revenue are. So you will get that update in just a couple of weeks from Parks and Rec.
All right, so I'm happy with that explanation. That's not what was told to us at the last meeting when you said it was being on the agenda for the next meeting. And I believe it's also in minutes from there, so, thank you.
All right, then, may we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
We now stand adjourned.
All right.
[inaudible] Yeah, well... They don't see all of it, but it's your stuff. Okay. It was okay to give you that because it goes probably directly past it. Yeah, that's fine. That's great. Yeah, no problem. We'll save the 50, 52 cents. Yeah. 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 Yeah.